7 o'clock. Let's call this work session of the Silver Falls School District Order. Have you no attendance?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's get going here on our discussion items. First item up is our bond rate analysis. This is talk about how much money we still owe on our debt for the high school from Carol Samuels from Piper Jaffray.
Good evening, everybody. I am Carol Samuels and I work at a firm called Piper Jaffray.
Oops, sorry.
Very romantic. I don't know how long each of you have served on the board, but over the course of the past 30 years while I've worked for the predecessor firm to Piper Jaffray, I've worked with Silver Falls, Silverton High, and Silverton Elementary four times to bond. So any of you been here long enough to been through this before? Well, then we probably have to go over. In any case, what Andy asked me to do was just provide an overview of what your situation is currently and how much longer you have on your existing debt. And it does not look like there's more.
Yeah, try that, Carol. We'll have reviews.
There we go. Okay, so this is actually not super relevant to you right now, but it is a graph, as you can see, of interest rates with the light blue line being interest rates over the past 20 years of U.S. Treasury obligations and the darker blue lines being an equivalent index of municipal bonds, the types of bonds that you guys sell. And the inescapable conclusion is that interest rates are still at rock bottom lows, which would be helpful if you were borrowing today. Not so helpful if you're not looking to borrow for, say, 35 years because who knows where interest rates are going to go. I will say I've been predicting that interest rates would go up, oh, you know, since 2010. And you can see every time I predict it, I'm wrong. So whether or not interest rates are going to go up or not, it is a key element in using as an assumption in projecting future levy rates for future bonds. But a more important variable in determining your levies, how much each of your taxpayers have to pay, is what we call assessed value. And I'm gonna walk around because I like walking. But what many people think about when you talk about property values is this first column, what we call real market value. Real market value is exactly what it sounds like. It is the county assessor's best estimate of how much each property is worth within the Silver Falls School District boundaries. So this number just came out for this fiscal year, the '17-'18 fiscal year. And you can see it's been growing steadily since 2013. And it is higher than it ever was prior to the recession. So at $2.5 billion, that again is the assessor's best estimate if you put every taxable property on the market tomorrow, how much money you would generate. Most people think that when they pay their property taxes, they're paying their property taxes on their actual market value. However, a gift of 1997's Measure 50 was the creation of a new definition of value, what's called assessed value here, which back in 1997 was equal to roughly 90% of actual market value. But then the growth of that value was limited to 3% every year unless there was new construction or if you did a major remodel on your property, then it could be reassessed. But for the most part, most homeowners, if they went back, and this is your assignment tonight, go home and pull out your own property tax. And chances are unless you did something major to your house, your assessed value is simply 3% higher than it was last year where your market value in this area probably went up 6% or 7% or more. So you can see that the difference between real market value and assessed value is quite significant. And when you talk about taxes, this is the value against which you are taxed. Okay? Urban renewal is taken off the top of some types of taxes, not all types of taxes. But when you net it out, it isn't a significant amount for the city of Silverton. You're left with the net assessed value. And you can see that your assessed value has actually, despite what I just said, about 3% being the limit, you can see your assessed value has been growing at quite a bit more than that. That's largely because of new construction. So Andy was telling me about a lot of new residential development. That's showing up in those numbers. Although you can also see back in 2013 that there was a period of time and...
Excuse me.
No worries. In many ways, the timeline for assessments lags actual circumstances. So most people think the recession really happened in 2008 and '09. It took till about 2013 for it to hit your taxes. That's why your tax rate growth is so much lower. Okay. So one of the other key things we look at when we are projecting what your levy is going to look like is what your outstanding debt is. And as you can see here, there was the new high school in 2007. Then in 2008, we did a refinancing of the 1998 issue, which I think was also for the high school.
Correct. For a baseline.
The first part, right. And then in 2013, we did another refinancing of the 2007 issue. Did not change the term in any significant way. You are not allowed under Oregon law to actually extend the term. So in a way, of these issues that are still left, the 2013 issue was a replacement of the 2007 issue. And the 2008 issue went away in 2013. Okay? So what you're left with is about $33 million of an original $47.5 million issue. That was sold in 2007 and it was a 20-year issue. So it will expire in 2027. Okay? Any questions so far? All right. Down here is a table that measures your theoretical statutory limit on general obligation debt. I have to tell you that Oregon statute is very liberal in terms of granting you debt capacity. So I can't think of a school district that's gotten anywhere near their debt limit because it all comes out in the wash of taxes. And if you really were to borrow $198 million, I can tell you that your tax load would be so high that your odds of getting motor support might not be all that great. But your theoretical limit is equal to 7.95% of your real market value, not your assessed for reasons that have historical meaning but are no longer really relevant. So that's about $200 million. You have to deduct your existing debt of just under $34 million, which leaves you a lot of room to get yourself in trouble. Okay. Lots of numbers on this page, but I promise... Whoops. It's not that bad. So let me break it down for you. So on the left side here, you have all of the annual debt, principal and interest on each of your prior issues. Okay, as I said, there was a '98 issue. That was refinanced by 2008. And both of those together went away in 2013. And there was the 2007 issue, which you started making principal and interest payments on in 2008. That was then refinanced in 2013. And this is what your debt load looks like. Go away. Anyway, this is what your debt load looks like through 2027. When you add these up, you get the total debt service. And there were a couple of years where you had multiple issues simultaneously, which led to a levy rate that hit a high, I think this was in 2011, of $3.70 per thousand dollars of assessed value. What does that mean in English? If you have a tax rate of $3.70 and you have a property with an assessed value of $100,000, that's $370 a year. I use $100,000 not to insult anyone. Again, assessed value is typically substantially lower than market value. On my property, tax bill came in at 49% of real market value. So it's not necessarily an outrageous number to use. It's also one that's easy to extrapolate from. So if it's $370, if your home has an assessed value of $200,000, it's double that. So how do you determine this levy rate? Well, it's actually about as simple arithmetic as you are going to find when it comes to our property tax system, which is actually pretty complicated in order to understand. But general obligation bonds are one vestige of fairly easy math. So I'm just gonna show you what the assessor does. So let's talk about 2018. You had principal and interest due of just over $3.7 million in total attributable to the 2013 issue. So what Steve did is he submitted that $3.7 million plus an amount that he estimated would be delinquent. Under Oregon law, you are allowed to gross up your levy because frankly, not everybody pays on time. Most people pay eventually, but about somewhere between 3% and 5%. I don't know what assumption we were using, but state average, about 5% pay late. They may pay a year late, but they pay. So Steve doesn't want to come up short because this is a full faith and credit obligation. You're not allowed to say to your bondholders, "Oh, by the way, I didn't collect enough, sorry." You would have to dip into the general fund to pay it back if you have a shortfall. So Oregon law helps you out by saying you can increase your tax levy by that amount. So what Steve did is he took this $3.7 million, took into account whatever cash was on hand in the debt service fund, added an amount for delinquencies, and submitted that to the assessor. That's done in July. In October, the assessor comes up with this number, this $1.7 billion. That's your value. All he does from there is he takes this $3.7 million plus the delinquencies, that's your numerator, and he divides by this number. And you get miraculously $2.18. That's your current levy rate that was on your individual property tax bills this past fall. You can see that it's a bit lower than where it was last year. And it's bounced around a little bit, but somewhere around $2 to $2.20. That's down significantly since way back here when it was more like $3.50 to $3.70, largely because the 1998 issue, which was refinanced by the 2008 issue, went off the taxes. Okay? Everybody following? We then run a projection in which we say, what do we expect your levy rate to be over the remaining life of the issue? And the key variable that we have to build in is what do we expect to happen to your denominator? Because these numbers, your actual principal and interest is fixed. That's not going to change. The denominator, on the other hand, is going to grow by maybe 3%, maybe more. You have a history of higher rates. But in some years, you've had less than 3%. So typically, as a place to start, we like to be conservative and we assume something that we expect to be low. And in this case, we assume 2.75%. If you wanted to go through the process of looking in a new bond, we would want to sit down with Andy and Steve and refine that because that can have implications for both what we project your existing debt to go for and what any new debt might come on the rolls about. But you can see we project it's gonna be somewhere between $2.30 and $2.30 over the remaining life of this issue.
Carol, you go back.
Yeah.
So I noticed on the payment...
Yeah.
It's always increasing. So this isn't like a typical home mortgage when it's the same payment every year.
Correct.
You're just assuming that it's okay.
And that was intentional because at the time, Andy's predecessor, that would be Craig Rossler, wanted to keep the levy rate roughly the same every year. Well, if you've got a fixed payment and a growing assessed value, if you structure it like your mortgage, fixed payment every year and your assessed value is growing, that causes the levy rate actually to go down every year. So there was a slight increase built into each year's debt that the expectation was that assessed values would grow by that amount as well.
Okay. And that's what, 2.75% each?
Correct.
Okay. On each side, okay.
Yeah. Okay. So this is just for those of you who are visual people. I haven't been one of them. This is just a snapshot of all of those numbers put into a graph. The dark blue shows you your history. And you can see up until 2007, when you added the new issue, it was hovering around $1.50. Then it jumped up to about $3.50 for the 2007 issue. And when the 1998 issue went off the rolls, it went down in 2013. And it's staying roughly level with some variability for the assessed value, the actual performance. Finally, this is a comparison which some of my clients like and some of them hate, that shows you how you stack up, in this case, to mostly your neighbors. I will note that we have statistics on everybody. So if you just want to see people in Marion County, we can show you that. Just Marion and Clackamas, we can show you that. If you just want to see people you play football, we could show you that. But in this group, which includes a lot of metro area districts, you are dead in the middle. There are quite a few districts, particularly the larger ones in the Portland metro area that are now over $9 total. And yes, that includes Portland and it includes Beaverton and it includes Westland and Tigard is getting up there, et cetera, et cetera. I always like to point out Gladstone though because, you know, if you think that it's just a big, very wealthy district, obviously, that's not the case. And if I showed you statewide, there are other smaller, less affluent districts. Hermiston has a rate that's over $9. Cresswell has a rate that's pretty close to $9. So I'm not suggesting that that's where you want to go. But this really should give you a flavor of it's all about the message and connecting with your community about what you want to do. You at one time were much higher on this list than you are right now. And I think that's everything I brought for you tonight. Yep. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, that was very informative. I thought I heard, yeah, I thought, I mean, just you just mentioned that like some of the Portland areas were up to 9, but I thought that, I thought they were lower. Is it, do they have a different permanent rate? Or do they contact skyscrapers in large industries, you know, where we're pre-residential here only? And at farm ground, which is taxed very low?
Yeah. So this is the dirty little secret of Measure 50. This column, this permanent rate column, is the rate that is charged by districts to pay for operations. It is all over the place, all over the state, and it has absolutely no relationship to any rational premise. I mean, none. One of the districts that has the lowest permanent rates, they don't like when I give this example, but I'm going to because personally, I find it offensive, is Riverdale. Riverdale has a permanent rate in the $3. And it's largely a historical artifact of where you were back in 1997 when taxes were set. So Portland's rate is like 5.25,
Oh, okay.
Which, you know, I don't feel bad about.
Plus they have local option.
They have local option. And that matters too.
Yeah, I think I've heard that they have low construction bonds, but they have high permanent rates. Plus the local options kicks up. Okay.
One district that, you know, hit the jackpot in terms of permanent rates that just got a new bond approved is North Marion, just down the road. You know, and again, it really reflected where they were in 1997. For whatever reason, their levy was super low.
And it kind of got set in stone.
And it got set in stone.
Interesting.
Their taxes are pulling it up.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's interesting because it's good to say, you know, I guess I mistakenly assumed that our payment was... Do you see any trends? Because we're seeing so much construction. Is the trend, you guys see Steve and Andy reflect what we see on the ground here in Silverton with all the construction? You know, does that 2.7% growth rate, you think, reflect?
Well, we're seeing the increase face upon assessed value in the school district, especially within the city of Silverton
Right.
with what we see. But we see that even out of the city. Use the South Abiqua as an example. There are four new homes being constructed on the South Abiqua right now, six feet, on a two and a half mile stretch, Tom and Scott's Mills. And there's a number of new homes going out there as well. So with that said, I think that goes back to what Carol just referred to with the assessed value rate that has been higher than 3% over the last few years, an indication of assessed value growth in the community. Not necessarily an indication of enrollment growth, right? Or even population growth for that matter. But distinctly not enrollment growth is what we're discovering.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, when does the... Oh, you know, for instance, the new house is going up on Steel Hammer. You know, when did those start? Assess values go through, get through, and affect what we see here? I mean, is it, have they been assessed? Are they getting charged taxes yet?
I believe it's once the transaction occurs and they get filed with the county. The moment that begins is when, Steve, you may be able to comment more on that. So if a person, if I understand you right, Tom, if a person purchases a home, when does that, when does the tax?
When does that come into...
When do they make their first payment?
I guess so, yeah.
It's a year later for the previous year. Is that right, Steve?
I mean, is the construction we're seeing around town reflecting in the numbers we're seeing right here?
Well, we just get the, you know, you hit the nail on the head. You know, we hit 5.04 on this property tax cycle, which is the highest in eight or nine years in terms of assessed value growth, which, you know, we know that the assessed value can only go up by a maximum of 3% on existing properties. So that would reflect the new construction in our district. And then we, you know, it's conservative that we would have 2.75 for, you know, for the remaining years. It's probably gonna be higher than that. It's been trending upwards for the last five years.
I'm just curious to see if that... This was curious, this kind of what prompted this discussion was to see if the construction is gonna kind of spread the load out and ease the bond rate a little bit.
Yeah, it's possible that that bond rate could get closer to 2% rather than, you know, stay at 2.15.
And, you know, some districts prefer to wait until one debt goes off before they think about adding new debt. Other districts, you know, just down the road, Salem is talking about their structure is not that dissimilar than yours. They've got a level structure and they're talking about increasing it because of their needs. And that may or may not be appropriate for everybody, but it depends how quickly you need more capital infusion.
Yeah, I think that discussion is probably for another day.
For us.
But no, it's good to have a reflection.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And if you have questions after this, please guys, remember.
Okay, next item up is the use of revenue from the sale of Eugene Field School. Andy and I just signed papers on that today.
Awesome.
So, yeah. So did you get the check?
We get the check delivered tomorrow. Catch your...
Okay.
Take a picture of it.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a picture. Debbie has put the pen will be signed behind the glass.
Boy, that's nice to be done with that.
Yeah, so anyway, you and Lauren had some... Something you guys want to talk about? Or how, you know, where we kind of review of the... You know, when we... What we were gonna do with the money after we sold it?
Right.
You know, and how we...
Resolution, right.
Yeah, yeah, the resolution.
Yeah, I can tee this up a little bit, Tom, if you like. The, now that the sale is complete, I felt it appropriate for the board to have a discussion. And if you're interested in doing so, of course, but to have a discussion about the use of the revenue from the sale of Eugene Field, partially because the board had a discussion two or three years ago when the resolution was approved by the board. And also took a look at some, very similar to what Carol was just discussing, sort of crystal ball view of the future, what we believe that the school would generate. from revenue, and how you would best pay off the two and a half million dollar loan that you acquired for repurposing the old high school to sell it to the middle school. With all of that said, the sale is now complete on Eugene Field School, and you landed a million dollars for sake of this discussion, that will mean, and we just determined this today, in the pocket will be $956,000. So that is the million minus the commission and minus some fees. So that's the check that we'll be receiving tomorrow. What I want to be certain that the board has a discussion about, and this is entirely up to you, is thinking about two and a half or three years ago, when the board had the discussion about the resolution and about the anticipated revenue generated from Eugene Field. Do you want to have any more discussion about using any portion of the revenue from the sale of Eugene Field School for any other purpose in the district? Because based upon the resolution itself, the board at the time approved that the revenue, any revenue, I believe with the exact words, any revenue generated from the sale of Eugene Field School would be applied toward the two and a half million dollar loan. And that makes sense, and if you were to do nothing, that's exactly what would happen. However, at the time, the conversation with the board at the time was, there was some uncertainty, and I think to some folks, a million dollars is more than what you actually anticipated in generating from that, from that sale. So I believe from a public interest standpoint, you at least need to have the conversation. Do you want to generate, excuse me, use any of those dollars for, in this case, using past practices, an example, when you've sold schools in the past, Monitor School is the most recent example, you applied a portion of the revenue of that sale to the, to most impacted schools. So you took, I can't remember with the specificity of the numbers, but I think it was about $101,000 or $140,000, and you applied it to Butte Creek School and to Scotts Mills School for facility improvements, because those were the two most impacted schools. Using a similar train of thought, if you were to do the same, and if you believe that this was a worthy pursuit to consider as a board, you could take a portion of the revenue and apply it to Mark Twain Elementary and Silverton Middle School, since those are the two most significantly impacted buildings. Again, if nothing changed, and the board took no action on this, then everything would go as stated in the resolution, and the $956,000 would be applied directly toward the loan. I will share with you too, and Steve is here and he knows this as well, that there, any revenue that's applied toward the loan will follow a particular schedule, and that was a 13-year loan, a full faith and credit loan for repurposing of the creation of Silverton Middle School. And I believe it's year six of the loan is when, or seven, when early payoff can begin to occur without a penalty. So we'll continue to make our semi-annual payments on the loan, but in order to put $956,000 toward that loan and avoid a penalty, we're going to have to wait till year six or year seven to be able to do that. There's, what's that called, Steve, early, penalty for early payment of the loan. And I don't think we want to assume that. So that's, in your packet are two documents. One is the actual resolution from 2015, or 16, and the other is a budgeting document that the board at the time used in 2015 for determining the loan on the Silverton Middle School. So at this point, Mr. Chair, I would suggest if there's any interest by the board to look at this. No action would be necessary tonight. I think if anything, if you want to continue the conversation in the future, or if the consensus is, you know, there's no interest, then we will be ahead and we apply this to the loan as stated.
Yeah, Andy, I don't mind talking about it. I think the, probably what I'd like to see updated is the, oh, the estimated budget from back to two, see if you can update, you know, that was made two years ago, and just update what we know, you know, for instance, we know that, well, we know we got more money out of Eugene Field than what we budgeted, because we kept it really low, because there were so many unknowns about the building, you know. You don't want to budget high and have it coming low. For instance, the lease agreement on the Charter School, they moved, so that, that $21,000 per year is now is gone.
That's gone, correct.
But our construction excise taxes, revenue, I think, are going probably up a lot.
Yeah, they're double had or more over the last few years.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd like to see more discussion, I mean, because there's things that need to be done, we heard about up at Mark Twain. So I'd like to see this updated with, you know, with what we know, and make some more estimates and see where we're at. And see if, see if there is truly some excess, you know, from the.
And it'd be nice to know, Andy, what the penalty would be.
We can get that as well.
Yeah, that'd be something to evaluate.
The money that's sitting off to the side, is it gaining interest? I mean, 2.5% a year isn't very, how does that, how does that work? You know, you set that million dollars, you gotta set that million dollars aside? Or a certain amount?
To wait for the penalties.
Right, to wait, but, you know, you know, you're, you know, our.
Yes, it does generate interest, and I am going to turn to the expert on that, because there's a maximum government, you know, interest rate that can be incurred based upon laws in the state of Oregon, Steve. And I don't know, I'm not going to put you on the spot to ask you how you cite that, but that is controlled. We're not allowed as a, as a public entity to invest dollars for the purpose of creating, generating revenue. We're, actually, laws control the ability to do that, but.
The majority of our dollars sit in the local government investment pool under the Oregon State Treasury. I think that interest rate is just under 2%, which is much better than it was during recession when it was about 0.4%. But you'd be surprised, I mean, with, like, right now, we was talking about last month with all our property tax, most of our property tax revenue coming in, you know, 16, 17 million dollars sitting in there, that's a pretty good chunk of change for a month, you know. So, you know, obviously, that's, we're talking about all funds.
All the funds are.
You know, I think, I think it would be good to do an updated, like you said, an updated analysis of this with an analysis of interest, at least projected over time, with what that prepayment penalty looks like, and kind of do an analysis there. And I could tell you on the construction tax, just off the top of my head, I know that through November, just the first five months of this fiscal year, we received close to $95,000 just in the first five months of this fiscal year. So you're right, it has continued to increase each year. And that goes straight to the capital projects, so.
Right, you know, that doesn't mean it's, that doesn't mean that that's going to continue, but it's an updated, it's an updated projection.
Since we've done this document, it's, it's been higher than we predicted. And of course, like you said, we did receive more on the sale of the building than we expected too. So I think it would be good to do this and maybe potentially bring it back to the January work session, because we're probably going to have the audit to share for that too, which would probably be a good, you know, good discussion to have. Because our next semi-annual payment, our payments are January and July, so we're going to have this January payment coming up here in a few weeks anyway, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think that'd be good information to have, Tom, but I, I would probably side on, we're trying to get this paid off as soon as possible. You know, we have a lot of older buildings and that kind of stuff, that at some point, we're probably going to have to talk about a bond, and I think the sooner we have a lot of this stuff paid down, the more palatable that would probably be for people, so.
Yeah. That's my default position too, but I think it's worth a discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, if the, if we set a bunch of Eugene Field money aside to make the payments, but our construction excise taxes are going up, well, the most construction excise taxes money can put a fencing possibly, you know, I mean, it can, you know, it's important to stick with what the resolution said. I think it's very important to only deviate that. You know, try not to do that too much, but, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see more, I'd like to see more information.
No, I agree. I would like to, for sure. And I'm not sure that I, that the information in the resolution in 2015 is, I think with the new information that we get, it might not be adequate to go that direction. I think that more conversation needs to be had, and not default to the resolution per se. It's good to have it, but I think when we get the updated numbers, that will help us decide what direction to go. So I think it should be left on the table as a neutral, honestly, for me. There's a lot of changes that happened in two years in our district, and I think those need to be looked at again, in a little bit more detail, especially now that we have the middle school up and running, and we also have actual, the Mark Twain Elementary School up and running, and those, the issues that are happening at those two schools, we know now what we need to, or at least, maybe we don't, we need to look at those two, so. I don't know, that's my thought. I agree with you, tabling it, lots more discussion.
I think we need to see updated figures, and I want to pay the loan off as soon as we can too. When I hear like Greg Kotz's report about the need for fencing in Mark Twain, I'm really, really concerned. That's something like that really concerns me. I mean, kids can bowl pretty fast, and that's really concerning, so to me, I, I mean, if we had to vote on that tonight, I'd say take a little bit out and fence Mark Twain. Personally, that's my personal opinion. That's how important I think that is, but, but I'm all for looking at more figures and making sure that it's the right move. But I think that's something we just can't ignore. You know, I don't want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, take hundreds of thousands of dollars away from the sale of Eugene Field for projects, but if we have, you know, things like that that are pretty important in timeline, I think it's really worth looking at doing that.
I agree. I think the fence is a pretty compelling need.
Yeah.
And if it can't come from anywhere else, then I'm willing to look at it.
And then maybe, Lauren, if sometime you can speak on this, I know a while back you spoke on some of the capital improvements that were required for some of the campuses. Are there any improvements that we've placed on hold at this point that by continuing to do so may cause greater harm, thus costing more money in the future, that might be important to address now?
I'm going to say yes, there probably is. I mean, we have a, we have a very large list of projects in this district, some very significant roofing projects. What I've been trying to do is continue on what Joel was doing and look for any opportunity grant dollars, for example. These seismic grants have helped us out with some of the roofing projects. So we immediately applied for one for the middle school, actually two for the middle school, we got the one. There's a lot of needs in these old buildings. There's a reasonable question.
So maybe we need to kind of revisit, take a look at that as well, take that into consideration.
So, actually, Andy and I were just discussing that today and trying to put together a list, basically, a facility update, and come to a meeting and discuss that.
Lauren had presented last summer, or maybe it was early summer, early spring, and we had agreed to have him come in at some point in the middle of the year to a work session, do just that, Ron, give you an update, speak about, it was even some conversation about what it would take to demolish the old three-story Schleder portion, and throw that in the mix in, and see what some of those high priority projects are. And so Lauren is preparing for that, it'll either be January or February work session, and we'll get her back here.
Cool. So would it be putting the cart in front of the horse here, do you want to maybe start getting some estimates on the fence? But if we decide to, you know, take some of this money out or whatever, we know what kind of figures we're talking about?
No, I don't think it would be too.
Yeah, and Lauren's pretty good with that. Yeah, he's already.
Greg and I have to meet again, because we met, we looked at it, and it wasn't real clear, we thought he knew where he wanted it, but then it sounded like there was some changes when, when he met with you guys. So I want to make sure we have a clear outline of where, where it needs to be, you know, so that we get accurate estimates.
I will share, just for clarity purposes, that the board took action about five years ago to do pretty significant fence upgrades across the school district. We didn't do any at Mark Twain, because Mark Twain was a middle school at the time, but we did at Scotts Mills and Central Hall and Butte Creek and all over the place. But there were none at Mark Twain, because it wasn't, it wasn't warranted. Now that we have five, six, and seven-year-olds there, I agree with you, I think it's warranted. And so we need to find some dollars to get that done.
So I gather you were just talking about where placement?
Yes.
Would we probably be talking about putting it between the surplus portion of the property and the used portion?
Well, I think the one thing, I originally thought he wanted to fence in the soccer field, so that is to the north, and it sounded like he said, no, he wanted to fence that out. So, for example, that makes a significant difference in now. So we really need to figure out what area they need to be fenced and secured and, you know, get accurate estimates for that.
So just to recap a little bit, we've asked for, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ron asked for an update for the capital projects, the capital, okay, possibly pay off the loan or apply towards the loan, possibly putting the money towards Silverton Middle School, Mark Twain. Was there another thought of?
Well, we need to know what the penalty is for.
The penalty, thank you, that was the one I was missing. So those are the five, or one to do four, thought processes that we need to look at and get more information on, and then make a decision later on after January.
I just want to express that I agree with Ron's question about, you know, are there any outstanding projects that would cost more down the road if we wouldn't do something now and might be a reasonable investment now?
There's going to be some pretty good roofing projects that are going to be on the budget list for this coming year, so. And we have a lot of simple fireroofs in this district that were basically designed to be a 15-year roof, and some of them are 30 years old, so. We've been coating, and spot coating was what we've done over here at the middle school just to try and keep it dry, but you can only do that so long, and it's going to have to be replaced.
So we'll hear more in January or February, right, about those kinds of things?
Yeah.
And you'll have those lists, like you did before, broken out, safety, the safety items, because those in my mind are the ones that we need to hammer down on first.
Yeah, I will try and do that.
Yeah, thank you.
We have those, you recall those from the Budget Committee, or if, and so Budget Committee is still a few months away, but we'll definitely get this together. I, I'm glad you mentioned January, February, this is, this will take a little time to put these together, so it could be February before we get this to you. And I really believe that based upon what I'm hearing from all of you, that Lauren's information that he can share with you about shorter and long-term projects, would, it would be appropriate to have that at the same time with an update to the revenue from Eugene Field. Is that accurate?
Yes.
I have a quick question for you, Andy. The resolution that was signed in 15, are we obligated absolutely to this in every sense of the language, or can this be also the money used for curriculum of any kind?
Well, that's, that would be a board decision. I mean, the board can surely change a resolution.
I wasn't sure.
This is, this is to be administered as it's written right now.
Right.
So if there were any, any changes, and sometimes changes happen simply because they happen. As an example, the first bullet under project description, Community Church Charter School is not located on the middle school campus, right? So things happen that are out of our control. However, nearly everything else on this resolution has been applied, and if the board is interested in making any change to use of the dollars, even, even designating a portion to be used for Mark Twain Elementary and the middle school, then the board can surely change that at that time. I will let you know that the, the general practice, while there's no statute or rule or policy around this, the general practice, and I think what the public has been times expected in the past is, if they're going to be, is if there's revenue generated from facilities, that that revenue is in turn applied to facilities. That's very easy to understand, I think that's a reasonable expectation. So if it were to be applied to curriculum, I would think the board would really want to have a pretty thorough and deep conversation about why that would occur instead of going toward facilities. That's my statement.
Okay, well, I just, I wanted to make sure that we weren't, if that was a direction, that that was a possibility. But that's, I wanted to make it clear, you know, for everybody, so.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Any more questions about the Eugene Field?
Thank you for your feedback, all of this very helpful information. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, next discussion item is that consideration of complaint against local officials. So Dana, Dana Smith submitted her information to us against Tom White, and I guess we need to decide if we want to do anything about it, do we want to investigate, do we want to, you know, where do, where do we want to go from here? Do we want to, you know, where do we want to go from here? And then we've already censured Todd for his actions on, behaved on social media. It looks like, you know, it looks like he's done some again. I don't know. I don't know, I don't know how to, you know, we certainly have a complaint about it. I guess in order to investigate it, we'd have to get his side of it. But I don't know really where to go. It's like I said, we've already censured him. So, I'm not really quite sure, sure where to really go from that. Does anybody have any input? I'm kind of, you know, the voters kind of have a, the voters choose our officials and, you know, that's, you know, Todd's up for reelection in a year and a half. And I'm kind of of a mind that the voters will make their choices. And I don't know really much what we can do anyway. At the end of the resolution, it just says, I think we asked him to resign if he, but that's all we can do. So, I don't know. I mean, I guess it's kind of up to us for discussion. It's up to Todd and go from there. We can't really make him do anything. So, anybody have any?
I really don't plan to resign here. I think that this is, you know, plain and simple. I was calling out an elected official who, you know, broke the law and I thought I was trying to hide it. That's it. There was no name calling. There was no harassing, nothing like that. I was a little bit, perhaps a little bit curt, but, you know, it's no different than, you know, what you see in either news agencies you watch, where you got the senators up there calling for other people to resign or, you know, that sort of thing. I don't think it was any different demeanor or anything else than that.
I think that the context made evident the complaint does deserve further review so that, I think we've talked about gathering more evidence, or Andy did in an email, that that would be a possibility if the board wanted to. To me, the email that was sent from the school district address is the most concerning because that was from a district official. And I just want to make sure that we're doing due diligence to consider. Also, yeah, we'll have to submit that.
Well, I just think that, you know, when it comes, and I think most of you know how I feel about this, but I was kind of blindsided by this at the last meeting. And this is the first I've seen, so I really don't want to comment on it until I read them. So.
Personally, I don't know what good it would do to do a further investigation about it. And we'd have to bring in an outside person and cost the districts some money and, I mean, what are they going to, what are they going to say? Todd's being a jerk like he has in the past. And so, I don't know. I don't see a whole lot different in this than what we censured him for in the past. So, but like Tom said, I mean, sure, we can ask him to resign, which is, you know, maybe what we should do, but that doesn't, I mean, it's, Todd couldn't pick what he wants to do. So, I just want to make that clear to the public. That doesn't really.
I guess that's my question is that, is the process that we're in tonight holding ourselves accountable to the resolution? That, to me, that's important, that we hold ourselves accountable to the resolution. And if that's what it takes to do that, if we can do, if we can move forward without further investigation, I'm fine with that too. But I think the idea is that, you know, Todd wants a chance to maybe defend himself. And so, we would need to open that up. But to me, it's important that, again, that for the third time, that we hold ourselves accountable to the resolution. And what is the pathway forward to that, I guess is unclear.
That's true, Jen.
Yeah, that's very true. You know what? I think the big issue is truly understanding the complaint. You know, one thing we haven't really talked about is the merit. Does the complaint lack the merit? Is there validity to, you know, what the complainant had mentioned? So, you know, I took all the supporting documentation and I read everything, highlighted and marked through it. And for me, it boils down to the actual complaint. What is the complaint against Board Member White? And for me, from my understanding, from what I can gather, there's two issues here. There's one is that Board Member White ignored the concerns of a constituent out there in the public. And number two is that there was the attempt to impugn the character of the complainant. Well, when you look at someone ignoring the concerns via social media, that's really not a board policy. I mean, social media is a slippery slope. It's something that people volunteered to participate in. And it gets very emotional at times, and there's a reason why I don't participate in social media. Now, the second one was about the impugning the character of the person that was complaining. Well, I wanted to make sure I'm on the right page here, so I looked at the definition of impunity. And so, it talks about disputing the truth, validity, honesty, or a statement of motive and calling it a question. So, when you look at the definition of impunity or impugning the character, well, yeah, there's some validity to it. However, it wasn't based on any falsehood, because when I actually followed the link to find out, what are we talking about? So, it looks like Todd White put in a link, there was an ethics violation directed at the person that was making the complaint. So, yeah, there is an ethics violation. Todd did nothing wrong in that respect. So, he was calling it a question, the character of the person bringing the complaint. And is that a policy violation? It's not a policy violation. Do I wish that maybe there was a different pathway as far as maybe the language or how it was handled on social media? Sure. But basically, what it boils down to, it looks like perhaps the person that brought the complaint was embarrassed because their ethics violation was brought in public. So, when I look at the cross of the matter, we're just being asked to mediate against a board member's practices on social media. And so, when it all comes down to it, I don't believe there's enough merit to spend any more time, energy, efficiency, and frankly, dollars on moving forward with the complaint. I think it really lacks merit and it's no reason to move forward on it.
When I read the policies that were cited in the complaint, the board member standards of conduct, cyberbullying, and the resolution, and the board member oath of office, I did feel like there was merit, especially the cyberbullying policies. I'm not sure if everybody has read those. I don't think they were included in our packet. But I would hope that we've all read those before deciding the merit.
So, yeah, so I highlighted every comment by Todd White in the supporting documentation that was provided. There's really nothing in here, at least from my perspective, that shouts at being a cyberbully. I see that Todd had responded to multiple people participating in the link regarding the discussion, but I don't see anything that shows that Todd went out of his way to cyberbully. Now, again, I'm trying to comment this from as an objective perspective as I possibly can, but I don't see that. So, I see, yeah, there's accusations of being a cyberbully. I'm just going by the supporting documentation. If there's anything else that should have been included in this packet that maybe would have pointed to them and to put weight onto that complaint, let me see it. I just don't see it from my perspective.
For me, it's the email that was sent from the school district email account that, I don't know the intent of the message, because you can never fully know the intent of somebody's, you know, message. But it was, I want to choose my words carefully. It didn't seem to encourage more communication. It seemed to discourage communication with a patron who was making a reasonable message. And I think that's not acceptable.
But does it constitute being a cyberbully?
Yes.
I mean, really, I think, what is the definition, perhaps if we came across a standard definition of what a cyberbully is? Would we all agree upon that? I think that would help.
Okay. So, I'd like to chime in here a little bit, and I wanted to listen to some of the other conversation or thoughts from our other board members. The first thing that I do want to say is I do agree with Jennifer on the email. As elected officials receiving an email from a constituent in our community to our public elected email, that constitutes a level of professionalism that has to come across to that person. I feel that the language that was used in that email to respond to Dana was not at the level of integrity that an elected official should respond to. So, that, I will agree with Jennifer on that. That's the first thing that caught my eye as well. I was like, ooh, wait a minute, hold on. Let's, you know, let's, let's look at that. The second thing I'd like to say is there are many of our policies that are very specific to the responses and the behavior that we need to have with our constituents in our community about our behavior. Let me go back here really quick to the email. Board policy, BHE, Board Member Liability Insurance. I'd like to ask you this question, Andy. The district will purchase liability insurance and errors and omissions insurance to protect its school board members individually and collectively for claims made against them as a result of their official board actions in the course of their official duties. When Todd responded to Dana in an email that was sent to us or him or you in our public email for an elected official, could his response be a liable problem for us? That was the one thing that I wanted to get cleared up.
I'm not certain.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to ask that question specifically of legal counsel to get some direction on that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to ask Andy to give me that answer, because I realize that the censure, and correct me if I'm wrong, legally separated the entire board and the district from anything that Todd would eventually do or continue to do or could do in the future from liable legal situation. So, I guess I'm trying to figure.
For liable, you have to say something.
I'm not done speaking yet. Hold on. I'd like to figure out the definition or the specific separations of our board policy in relation to the email that he responded to Dana, if that could be constituted as possibly legal action and how the censure is related to that as well. So, I guess I'd like more information.
So, do you certainly, I captured that correctly? So, to help determine the potential or risk for legal action by the person that was responded to, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah. If the person, you know, the email that was sent, that's actually, you know, a public elected email or public email for an elected official. And in our board policy and our liability insurance, you know, are we going to have to, is this a potential legal situation that we have to face?
Okay. I'll ask that question.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The second thing that I'd like to respond to is our Silverfall School District, called BBA, Individual Board Members Authority and Responsibilities. A board member has the right to express personal opinions. When expressing such opinions in public, the board member must clearly identify the opinions as his or her own. Okay? I just wanted to make that clear so we covered all the policies. In policy, BBF, Board Member Standards of Conduct. Use social media websites judiciously in a manner that does not violate Oregon Public Meetings laws. When using social media websites, board members will treat and refer to other board members, staff, students, and the public with respect. When I read through the formal complaint from Dana Smith, and I read several of them or the whole thing, the responses that Todd White gave to Dana were absolutely not respectful. They absolutely were not treating a constituent in our community with respect. Dana, it's truly appalling that you spread this ignorance. Hypocrite much? Dana Smith, you've hidden for a long time because you are shady and unfit for your position. You need to resign. Dana won't share anything. She's been hiding both investigations for most of a year. She just hoped you'd be all duped and it would go away. Dana, you have no standing. You hid these investigations from the public and the city council. You talk about transparency? It's time to step down. These are some of many of the responses that our elected official here in our district said to a constituent in our community. To me, that is not respect. That is not respectful conversation. You know, that is not something that Silverfall School District stands for in this community. We are a pillar of this community. We need to behave as pillars of this community. If, when we don't do that, we are sending a message to not only our constituents, but our students, our children in this community, saying that it's okay to talk like that. It's okay. And yet, we have a booklet about that thick that the students at Silverton High School have to read through, sign it by their parents and themselves, that if they violate any of those things in that booklet of code of conduct, they are in trouble and they will be handled. I'm sorry, I can't agree with you, Ron. I, this has gone too far. We have many other things that we have to worry about, that we have to talk about, that we have to discuss to make this district better or change or help. And with this distraction and this continuing behavior by Mr. White, we need to follow through with our resolution that was made in 12/12 of 2016, one year ago, just one year. And we have to decide whether we're going to say, well, you know what, yeah, we're not going to do anything. We'll just, we'll just, you know, figure it out in a year. That's not who we are. That is, that is absolutely not who we are. We need to investigate this further. We need to have more information. And I just have to support that we make sure that we get all the information, that we investigate it correctly, and that the decision is made correctly. And if that means bringing somebody in, then we need to do it because it's important that we follow through with our resolution and it's important that elected officials, just as much as our students, are held accountable. That's my two cents.
We did talk about the definition of cyberbullying. And in our policy that is titled cyberbullying, it says, cyberbullying is the use of any electronic communication device to convey a message in any form that declaims, intimidates, harasses, or is otherwise intended to harm, insult, or humiliate another in a deliberate, retarded, or hostile, or unwanted manner under a person's true or false identity. And the word insult, I think, is applicable in that email that was sent from the district email address. And I don't, I. And, and I don't, I kind of... I'm agreeing with some of you who don't want to make this into a huge deal. I don't either. I don't want to spend more time on it than we have to. But I agree, again, with Charlie about the resolution, that, you know, that's... If you resolve to do something, and you say you're going to ask a fellow board member to resign, I think that, that we have to consider that, instead of just leaving it hanging. I don't think that the community will look, look upon our work in a respectful way if we don't do that.
Well, Andy, one of the things we need to ask or to is, in that resolution that we all voted on, including Todd, is, does that make that Nolan Floyd the liability that we have? If we don't do nothing with this resolution, that's, that's a question that needs to be asked, because...
Absolutely, I'll ask that one as well.
Good question.
One thing, one other thing that concerns me is the the language, for one thing, but the... I mean, when I was reading through some of this stuff, I, it seemed like when you, when Todd was addressing Dana's Ethics, Ethics Commission complaints and things like that, even though the Ethics Commission had already ruled, and those, they had already, you know, made their standing, Todd was still accusing Dana of those things. And I don't know anything about Dana's Ethics. I've never looked into it, I know nothing about it. But I do know how the Ethics Commission works, and I do know that, um... I do know the process, and I've been to their meetings, and I know when they make it, when they make a ruling, that's, that's the ruling. And I don't think it's right to be still accusing somebody after that, after that ruling has already been taken effect, because the Ethics Commission obviously didn't, didn't ask Dana to resign, or didn't ask, you know... And I, like I say, I don't know the results of that. I don't know where it ended up, even I haven't, haven't ever heard, and I just... I mean, Dana's still in office, so I would assume that it wasn't a huge, maybe slap on the wrist, or something. But to continue to, to continue to kind of hit on that, and continue those accusations, when that is, when that's in the past, is still, is concerning to me, too, so...
You know, you guys kind of mentioned liability and everything, but there was no liable, nothing that I said was untrue that I know of. Everything that I know that I said was, is actual fact. So, I went to the complaints there. You know, there was no swearing, there was no name-calling, there was no, any of that stuff.
There was name-calling. You called her a hypocrite.
Yes.
That's not...
Yes, it is, that is name-calling. You called a constituent a hypocrite.
I called it. I called the elected official holding accountable.
No.
Yep. That's exactly what it was.
It's...
So, you told me that somebody who has ethics violations...
She could actually sue you, yes, it is.
So, if ethics violations is gonna accuse the board of hiding things, you don't think that's hypocritical?
Todd, I'm not gonna go any further.
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to...
It's the issue. Right.
The thing of it is, even if somebody, you can still be sued and not done nothing wrong, but you still have to defend yourself. You still have to pay money to defend yourself. And that's, that's the liability in itself. You know? We don't want that, the district doesn't want that. We don't need to do that. I think we need to suspend this till the next meeting, so we can all look at some more information, get what Andy's got. I mean, because it's one insult on character against another one. I want to know everything we can before we make a decision.
Yeah, yeah. That's kind of where I was, was going. I'd like to, I'm of two minds, I really... I like what Ron had to say, just looking at it cold, methodically, to people arguing. And then I like what Jennifer had to say about, you gotta be true to the resolution. And, you know, there's more thought I want to put into that. I really, I really like to do both. I, mildly, you know, you know, ultimately, Todd stated he's not gonna resign. This must be, he may change his mind. So, you know, we can go through all this, and it's all moot, because we can't make it anyway. And, yeah, but it, but it does have, well, yeah, exactly. I think it is a statement. You know? Just 'cause I'm ambivalent, I don't, I certainly don't think that Todd's behavior is advisable. The last person who brought a complaint on the board, it showed, I think it was you, wasn't it?
It was me, one year ago.
Yeah. And now, and now you're on the board, so I don't, I don't know who won the argument. I'd say we probably won the argument, judging by the results. You know? So, yeah, let's, let's... If everyone's in agreement, can we just, you want to just have some whoa heads, and think about some things, and revisit this next meeting?
I would encourage you, Mr. Chair, to ask, ask the question that your legal counsel has asked you to answer. Do you think the conduct described is sufficient to raise this matter to a level of further review and a re-investigation? And if the majority of the board believes that, I would encourage you to take action. Even if somebody is prepared to make a motion, that would be appropriate for that to occur, and literally take a vote on. If, if the, I think in order to maintain the integrity of a complaint procedure process, truly, the, the board, or whatever level of complaint is received, that person, in most cases, it's an administrator, will evaluate the information they have received from the complainant to determine if there is sufficient information to determine a deeper level of investigation. So, that's the point that you're at right now, is, is there enough information? I agree, you don't have all the information, because you have review policy, there are other people that may be questioned, but that's, that's what an investigation does. So, so you have the complainant information, and you, at this point, need to make a decision. Do you want to look into it further? Yes or no? If the answer is yes, then we'll put out some resources, and we'll, we'll do an investigation. If the answer is no, then, again, based upon legal counsel, it stays at a yes.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's what I was wondering. Are people ready to spend money on doing an investigation? Because it's resources, it's money, it's lawyer, it's, you have a lawyer on, on retainer.
We do, correct.
That we could, we could use that services for something else. Are we, is that what we want to do?
Or does that mean we look into it? Can that be construed that way?
That would be an option, and I think, I, the board always has an option of itself being the investigator. I would not recommend that, though.
Well, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying to further review, and then recommend something else. Not make a decision to hire a lawyer tonight, but just to review it ourselves some more.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Because I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to vote.
So, would you like more time to, like, read the packet, read our policies?
And the resolution.
Read the resolution, and just kind of come to a consensus for yourself?
Yep.
And make sure, you know, cover all the policies that we have, you know, all of that, for yourself? And not necessarily including the legal standpoint of it? Okay?
So, maybe, Andy, just for my edification. So, let's say we decide to do hire an attorney to do some due diligence. And they find out, after reading board policy, after going through the notes, after all the supporting documentation, testimony, and so forth, they find that board member Todd White spoke out of turn, didn't represent the board to the best of his ability, and violated, violated some policies. What does that mean? Then we then, as a board, say, if we decide to ask Todd to resign, and Todd says, well, no, I'm not gonna resign, are we finished?
To quote Lisa Freely, "Your actions are limited." You could censure him again, you know, if the board found merit in that. But other than that, there is not much else that can be done.
And that kind of boils it down for me. It, it, I think we've all, we've all said our piece, so I think most of us have expressed our displeasure, but in the end, there's nothing, there's nothing we can't do.
Yeah. You can follow through with the original resolution.
And, which doesn't get us in with, okay.
No, it might, it might not. It might not change it. It might not change it, but you are following through with a resolution that we are frustrating him.
We can skip the evaluation, or the investigation, and just go right through it.
Well, except for that Todd wanted to defend himself.
Then we need to say his piece.
He did, right.
And an investigation warrants that. It warrants hearing the perspectives from all parties.
And, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, no, it's okay, go ahead.
And that doesn't necessarily include legal? Or, or does?
I think if you were to investigate this further beyond what the complainant has shared, so you want to do some additional looking, you want to look at policy, review policy, you think it through yourself, then I think, regardless of who the, the person being complained about is, I think at that point, you also need to say, Todd, what's your input? So, if you're gonna look at it further, whether you do it yourself, or whether you hire a legal counsel, I think at this point, you would, I would generally expect you, the person, to ask for, for the perspective of Todd's as well.
But the way I look at it, there's no reason to spend money, because, I mean, we can come up with the same evaluation and end result.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't see no reason to do that. I would just like to have a little more time before I talk with Todd about it.
So, can I propose that, at the next meeting, that Tom asks us the question that was included in our email from the legal counsel? And then, at that point, we take a vote whether we proceed further. And that proceed, that proceeding further may not be hiring an attorney. It's just...
We can decide on the definition of the proceeding.
Deciding on joint action. If, if or none.
And at some point, will we get, at what point in this will we get input from Todd?
After that vote would be taken.
Right.
So, the vote would be to investigate the matter? So, it would be the same question you've been asked this evening, but postponing that until your next meeting, so the January 8th regular session.
Right, and would it be an action item, because we would be voting?
Correct. And it's always good to put an action item on, on an agenda. I mean, if there are time-sensitive issues, that's the only reason that I would recommend you taking it tonight. I believe that was warranted, but that, from a procedural standpoint, is inappropriate.
We need a procedure for Todd to say his piece. I don't want to spend ten cents on an investigation, because that's just, we, we know the result. So, to me, it's pointless. That's, that's my thought on the thing, but, so...
So, if we, I guess I'm a little confused, that if we decide at our next meeting to investigate, but we're not gonna hire anybody to investigate...
We can say that, ask if the complaint deserves further review?
And then, from that point, we would, we would wait another, another meeting, and to let Todd give his side, or...
At like the work, the next work session, maybe? And then, at that work session, we can discuss whether to move forward with honoring the original resolution, or some other path? And then, it'd be done.
I mean, board member Erv wanted to have more time to read the information. He wanted to do a little more research on his own, reading through the documents, reading through our standard, our policies, things like that. So, I think there's enough reasonable doubt to warrant us extending this to the next board meeting, just because I think we have several questions that need to be answered that Andy's gonna get for us, and then Erv wants to also research.
Is there any reason why Todd can't submit his input between now and the next meeting?
That's what I would suggest. Let Todd, let Todd have his say at the next meeting, and then we can...
Yeah, we can do it right then.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no reason to postpone it.
So, submit...
The fact that we're even talking about this seems to me that we want to look into it further. So, why not have Todd give his spiel then? And then, we can decide where we want to go with it, and either follow through with the resolution, or do nothing.
So, do you, so the suggestion that you're making is everything, all of that action be done at the next board meeting? And, okay?
Because Franklin's tired of...
Get it over with, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, tired of dealing with this stuff.
Can we have Todd submit his documentation by email?
Anything, anything procedural you got wrong with that?
Is that... I think we have to say that we believe that the complaint deserves further review.
That's really the decision. I'm waiting from you, to me. And I think postponing it to your next meeting would be entirely appropriate. And if Todd chose to submit information to the board, I think that'd be the same as any community member could submit information to the board of a complaint, maybe it was about them, but... So, I don't, I don't see procedural anything wrong with that. However, I will be announcing this all of our, off of our legal counsel, to be certain that we're following appropriate process. And this is unique. I think your, your struggle here is not indicative of anything other than it's a unique circumstance, and it's, it's wound in, in policy and process, and clearly, a complaint from a community member, and we just need to be certain, you just need to be certain, that you're, you're following the process. So, what I hear is, I believe, appropriate. And if you postpone it to the next meeting, I'll consult with legal counsel later, so that we're all on board with this.
Yeah.
So, you'll have a discussion item at the next meeting, very similar to the one you have now, and you'll have a potential action item, which would initiate an investigation into the matter. If the board, as a result of the investigation, were to take some other action, like another censure, that would have to come down the road, because something like this is just not crafted without investigatory material.
Sure, sure.
But we could, we could frame a different motion that could be heard out that night if we wanted to.
A different motion?
Like, to ask Todd to resign?
Yeah, let me, let me bounce that off legal counsel. I think the board can do any motion, I just, I don't know, Jennifer.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, because in order to gather information, we gotta have an investigation. Now, you gotta have an investigation, period.
Yeah, that's my question.
We can't do that from the beginning until the end of the meeting.
That's my question, because I'm trying to honor what Tim, Tim is asking, but I'm not sure it fits in the whole timeframe.
I'm not sure it fits as possible, so...
Well, why don't we, this is crazy. Why don't we, why don't we just say tonight that this warrants more investigation? And then, we can talk about it at our next meeting?
I, I would like to...
Andy, can you see anything legally wrong with that?
Someone can make a motion right now.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, the complaint against Todd White warrants more investigation.
I second.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to gather some more information against the complaint with Todd White. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, okay, saying none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
I, I will, for the sake of the record, if you could, if you could vote from everybody.
I believe so.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, all right, well, that's done. Okay, so now, let's adjourn to executive session, yeah, for now. Let's adjourn to executive session under ORS 1826602F, to consider information for reference that is required by law from public inspection. Sick leave bank request. Thanks for coming. Okay, let's return to open session. All right, do we have a motion on the sick, sick leave bank request?
So moved. I move that we grant Avina McConnell 25 days for her sick leave bank.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, saying none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, very good. Okay, does anybody else have any, any further business? Okay, saying none, meeting adjourned. Thank you.